Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to our Committee of Adjustment Hearing, the first of three meetings this evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Are there any disclosure of conflict of interest? Seeing none, accept the agenda. Deputy Mayor Williams is late, so I'll ask Counselor Manley to read the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move by myself, seconded by Counselor Massey, that the Council of the Township of North Lengary accepts the Committee of Adjustment Hearing Agenda of Monday, May 26, 2025.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion is carried, none opposed. Ratify the minutes. Committee of Adjustment Hearing Minutes, January 13, 2025. Counselor Massey. Yeah. Committee of Adjustment.
It should be the microphone right in front of you.
Microphone.
Move by myself, seconded by Counselor Cadell, that the Council of the Township of Northern Lengary accepts the Committee of Adjustment Hearing Minutes of Monday, January 13, 2025.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on the minutes? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Okay, moving on to minor variances. MV-01, 2025, Latysir subdivision, Counselor Cadell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The move by myself, seconded by Counselor Manley, that it is the recommendation of the Planning Department that the Committee of Adjustment approve Minor Variance Application MV-01-2025 as submitted.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the first minor variance for this evening, the owner, Monsieur Yannick Ladussard, so it's actually for the Ladussard subdivision where IHA used to be, the agent is Sarah Boucher from GMAD, location, you all know where it is, right there, that's the town of Alexandria. So that encloses the entire property, but I'm going to discuss a little bit furthermore, it's not the entire property that is subjected to this application here. So that's the property, as you know, it has access to County Road 43 and to Industrial Boulevard. Official plan designation for that property, urban sentiment area, so it's within the town of Alexandria boundaries, and it's designated as residential district. The zoning, so for this one, the zoning was changed back in its zoning bylaw Z10-2020, so in 2020, council passed the bylaw to change the zoning from R1 and R4, it was changed to what's now called RMU, so residential mixed use, and residential mixed use hold. So that's the two zones that you have right there. It was zoned like that for the previous subdivision application that was submitted to council. So that zoning still applies as of today. So the purpose for this application is to secretly from zoning bylaw via ZBA 10-2020 to increase the maximum building height from three stories to the proposed four stories, so approximately 12 meters, to permit the construction of five four-story, 40-unit apartment buildings being phase one on the proposed site plan development agreement. So, that's the entire property that you see in red, the area that is subject to this application is really only phase one, in particular, phase A point one, sorry. Yes, it's not phase one, they call it phase A, so for them, it's A point one. So where you see that yellow box there, that's where the five, four-story buildings will be built. So, there's no actual, like, our plans or definite site plan for that, but it's going to be called Phase A point one. So that's what's subject to this application here, and you see the overlap with the five buildings there in pink on your right-hand side. So this is, it's only that phase that is subject to this application. The rest of the property, it, council received a presentation the other day about the rest of property with higher buildings, it's not at all subject to this application here, this is really just an increase from three to four for that zone that you see right there. Next slide, right here. So the entire lands have approximately 54 acres. As I mentioned, the first phases will be accessible mostly via industrial boulevards on the northeast corner. It's got 182 meters of frontage. On November 2020, council passed the other zoning bylaw amendment, which is still applicable today, and the reason why we're only applying for minor variance instead of a zoning bylaw is really because they want to move ahead with things, with their studies and stuff, so they want to have an insurance that at least the four-story buildings will be permitted there. And the RMU zone is pretty much compliant with what they're proposing right now. So, we've got townhomes, and we've got the four-story buildings, so apartment buildings, which are permitted already in the RMU zone, so we're only changing the height, we're only increasing the height for this zone because we don't need to do anything else, the current zoning is already compliant. So, yeah, I'll switch the slide. So this is what it is right now, so Area A and Area B are what is zoned right now as, so Area A is residential mixed use, so RMU, so that section of the previous subdivision was, I guess, ready to go, the holdings preservation was removed, and Zone B is what was put on hold. So, basically, you can see there, a little part of Zone B will also have to be removed, so the holding zone will have to be partly removed for where those buildings will be, so council will be made aware of that, like, they will have to, council will have to pass another bylaw, and this will only be passed when we have the studies for servicing, basically, to ensure we can service those properties. So council will see the application again. So as I mentioned, they wish to construct a four-story high building, our zoning bylaws, so our comprehensive zoning bylaw, currently does not really, it does not specify the number of stories, it really specifies height, so that's an important thing in this case, because as you can see, four-story buildings here, they're only proposing the building to be approximately 12 meters, so I'll show it a little bit later, but it used to be zoned R4, and in the R4 zone, we're allowed to go with buildings that are up to 15 meters. So, basically, when they changed their zoning bylaw, they restricted it a little bit more in the sense that they prevented the higher buildings than three stories, so in this case, because they're proposing four stories, we absolutely have to change the warning, the warding, because it specifies three stories. But I'm just saying that because it's a minor variance, so originally, 15 meters high buildings were permitted. There's three, there's three buildings in Alexandria that are also four stories high, and fire department also said that it was not, that it was not an issue. So this is what the proposed phases are going to be. So Area A point one is what's subject to this minor variance here, Area A point two, there are townhomes, and these are permitted as such, and as in the current bylaw, the holding zone was also removed on that one. So they're really just looking to increase the height, to start the studies, to come back with, my next slides will explain it, but, oh, this is where I explained the height, so, yeah, basically, R1, you're permitted 10.5, so this is residential first density, they're proposing 12 meters, and in the R4, it's already 15 meters, so that's, I guess, a good case for making this a minor variance. So, yeah, this is the five stories, so as you know, parking, there's going to be some underground parking, green space, everything will be established in the site plan control development. So, after this meeting, should this pass, just want to make council aware that they will see this file again. So they have decided to do this in little portions, so they can move ahead with phase one, they will work on this, what they're doing is they're doing a site plan control for phase one only, so we'll pass the bylaw for the site plan control. While this is all happening, they are going to apply to the province for their subdivision agreement for the entire thing. So before the subdivision is passed, we'll also need to change the zoning for the entire subdivision. So council will see this file at least three other times during our meetings for other applications, so this is only for the minor variance. So, yeah, that's exactly what I was explaining, this is a little timeline of what they're proposing, sorry, it's not very clear. They are currently working on their site plan, so before completing all the services with the engineering and cost, they just want to make sure that they can move ahead with the four stories. And then you see the other lines are for SPD-A, for the zoning, and then for the subdivision agreement, which is going to be the last application. And, so as I mentioned here, this is a minor variance, so we just need to make sure it complies with the four tests of the Planning Act, the first one being the intent and purpose of the official plan. In this case, the official plan is already designated as residential district, that's exactly what we're intending to construct here, so it does comply with the intent, number two, of the zoning bylaw, so in this case, as I explained, the zoning bylaw is all compliant, it's really just the height of the building that we're trying to increase. Deemed desirable and suitable for the surrounding areas, so as I mentioned, there's been discussion with neighboring properties about the higher buildings, this is really only for three to four in that area, so phase one, the other zoning bylaw will come later. So for this minor variance, if it's deemed suitable and desirable, it was deemed desirable and suitable for surrounding areas, and is it minor in nature, as I explained, deemed minor as previous, like, before the zoning was passed in 2020, even higher buildings were permitted in that area. So, in conclusion, recommendation of the Planning Department that the Committee of Adjustment approve Minor Variance Application MV-01, 2025 as submitted. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Jacob. I have a couple of questions. They're obviously not building all those apartment buildings in the first couple of years, they're looking at building one and then...
Yeah, I think their schedule is on their A, B, C, D. The first one, they're just, basically, they're looking for like a assurance that we can do the buildings, but, yeah, the timeline has not been yet established, we don't even have the site plan for the phase one, so...
Okay, and second question, on the, when we got, when it was presented to us, early on, they had 10-story apartment buildings, so that's not something being considered right now?
Not at all, no.
And, I just spoke to the NUS bombers this week, last week, and my assurance is, and that's, I'm just one vote, but I would never, I think four is probably the max that I would like to ever see us go, and I don't think it's appropriate for anything higher than that, but again, I'm just one vote, so, questions or comments? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes, I agree with you on that point, I mean, at the very least, we would need more discussion before, you know, something such as a 10-story came into question, because, you know, I think it could have, you know, some significant ramifications, and, and, you know, I think a four-story is sufficient, and it won't be an eyesore, it won't be too tall, and yet, you know, it gives them that extra story, you know, which will allow for some densification, and admittedly, that's what we need in North Lengary, is some densification, so that we can increase our population, so, thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Madden, then Counselor Cadell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with these on the four-story, and just to Jacob's point, the R4, that it used to be allowed for 15 meters, if we're going 12 on this, theoretically, a five would be 15, we're not obviously talking about that tonight, I will say that I'm thinking discussion on higher buildings is something that would be well-placed at committee of the whole at an appropriate time, but these, I'm very good with, and I think this is exactly what we need right now.
Okay, Counselor Cadell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm always uncomfortable with changing things, but, you know, the setbacks and that, we do that fairly routinely, you know, we have our rules, and then we say, well, we'll just change it just a little bit or something, and that concerns me with this, that, you know, numerous people come to me, you know, that we don't want high rises, that we're not just exactly high, you know, it's the beginning, and it's, could be a precedent for further, next time it's, oh, it's just another story, you know, and I, so, I don't agree with it.
Okay, thank you. Further questions or comments at this time? We'll ask the, you'll ask.
Does anyone wish to speak in favor or against the application this evening? If anyone wishes to speak, you have to come to the microphone.
It's not there.
It's not there?
Good evening. We heard your proposal, and I would like to expand on your comment. I think rules have been created over a considerable period of time with love of considerations of pros and cons, and then have been voted on in the past to have a guideline to move forward in the future and to be used as such. And I have here a list of petition of residents who are not in agreement with this proposal, and it reads here, "By signing this petition, we request the North Lengary Council not to grant the variance allowing for residential buildings greater than three stories in Alexandria, including the proposed build on County Road 43, or particularly this case, the Habitation Ladussard." This document has been signed by 166, I repeat, 166 individuals, and I will leave that with you for reference, I spare you reading, me reading you every individual name on that, but it is obviously clear that a lot of people are not in favor of this development. And, that's number one. The number two was as well, that in that proposal, there was some talk about the septic or removal or septic connection, which is not really available right now, so there was proposal that there was a private septic, is that correct, Jacob?
Private septic system?
System to be installed?
It would have to be connected to the municipal system.
Okay, but in the document, you're saying that if that's not being possible now, as it is right now, they have to provide their private...
If it's outside of settlement boundary.
If it's outside?
Of settlement boundaries.
Outside of settlement boundaries.
Because this is all, this is all connected to municipal services, that's what I'm telling you.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it was not clear in the document.
Sorry.
Okay, so, he would like to pass it on to, yeah, if you can just hand it to the...
You can give it to the Jenna, Jenna is the W third.
I can take it.
Okay.
I will submit it to them.
Okay, thank you. Are there any, go ahead, ask a second time?
A second time, does anyone wish to speak in favor or against the application this evening? And a third and final time?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to respond to the statement, there was no indication, I'm not looking for an answer on this, Heinz, but there was no indication of what the actual objection is, other than, it sounds like, no, Heinz, I'm commenting, I'm not asking you to speak.
I can respond eventually.
It sounds, you know, like a not-in-my-backyard issue, and, you know, we desperately need growth and development in North Lengary, and so we need a positive and open-minded mentality in order to make that happen. The days of exclusively single-family dwellings are over. Densification is the only way to build affordable housing, or at least a combination of affordable housing, because when you go up, it's going to cost the developer less to be able to do that, those units will then be more affordable. So any development that happens, there is significant development that happens in North Lengary, is going to require a combination of different housing units, including something three or four stories high. We've already stated that we're not prepared to go anything over four, you know, it's splitting hairs, talking about the difference in between a three and a four-story building, it's not going to affect anybody's life, and it's certainly not going to ruin anybody's life, so, you know, we need to be a little bit more open-minded here in North Lengary if we want our community to thrive.
Okay, thank you.
So, in response to your comment, first of all, the proponent of this project came here to the Township Council, and with an opening statement that they will like, they like very much the culture, or not just the culture, but the atmosphere of this local town, right? And they will, made as well the statement that have no intention to change the atmosphere of that town, but if you start building four-story buildings, you do this very thing they claim not to do. So, and it's not about splitting here, you can use, I can use your comment the other way around as well, it's splitting here between three and four stories, and how do we know that they will really eventually make these apartments cheaper for anybody, or is it a profit goal here? We don't know that, that's, I would say it's probably a profit goal really here, and I'm all for development, I have no objections to the apartment buildings as such, but there are rules and regulations put in place, really, to, with the intent to keep a certain atmosphere, not just atmosphere, but a look of a town and an atmosphere, in a sense as to how the town ends up looking, and I think it's very clear that this is not in the spirit of what the, these rules really are meant to guide us into, that's number one. Plus, another thing I want to do to address...
You need to wrap it up, Heinz.
I'll wrap it up, yes, because it was promised to us to have a public consultation, but, public presentation, so we can discuss these issues, because last times, when I came here, they made a presentation to council, and then we had questions, and we were shut down, we were not allowed to have any questions, and they said, before we move forward, we are going to have a public meeting of some kind, where everybody is informed what's in the box. Did not happen, now we are facing with this proposal...
What do you, what do you think this is?
This is a proposal that's being, that's being put in front of us without you keeping your promises, don't wave me off like this.
I am waving you off, because...
No, because you're not, you're not keeping your promises.
This is a public meeting.
You are not keeping your promises, I'll repeat it again. You promised to the public that we have a, we have a public consultation meeting.
There's no more questions, there's no more questions. We asked for the third time, and there was nobody left. Okay, moving on to MV-02, 2025, Marcel Latysir? Sorry. Oh, sorry about that, yeah. So the motion on the table is, it is recommendation of the Planning Department that the Committee of Adjustment approve Minor Variance Application MV-01, 2025 as submitted. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Moving on to MV-02, 2025, Marcel Latysir, Counselor Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move by myself, seconded by Counselor Madden, that it's recommendation of the Planning Department that the Committee of Adjustment approve Minor Variance Application MV-02, 2025 as submitted.
Okay, thank you. Jacob.
Thank you, sorry, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, yeah, this minor variance, MV-02-2025, concerning bylaw number 04-2010 regarding outdoor burning appliances. So the owner for this file, Marcel Ladussard, the agent, Marc Ladussard, the location, 3811 County Road 45 in Alexandria. So you see here a map of Alexandria, County Road 45, so it's just southwest of town here. This is a little bit of a closer look, so it's the property in purple that you see right there. Official plan designation, rural district, so it's, the property is hidden behind the 45 there, the property that you see across is Gator Metals, so salvage yard, that's the pink property, so it's just across from there. The zoning designation for this property, rural industrial and rural, so as you can see right there, the garage was, the zoning for the garage was changed before 20, before 2000, sorry, to rural industrial, to allow for the garage to operate. So the purpose for this application is to secretly from bylaw 04-2010, so this one here is a little bit different in the sense that it's not a Planning Act application, it's really a minor variance for one of our bylaws, regulated under the municipal, passed under, sorry, under the Municipal Act. So the bylaw 24-2010, Section 3, for a reduction in the minimum acreage required for the installation of an outdoor burning appliance from the required three acres to the existing 1.97 acres, and to secretly from the same bylaw for a reduction in the minimum required setback to all property lines from 46 meters to the proposed 20 meter. So, excuse me, this is all done to accommodate the proposed installation of an outdoor solid fuel combustion appliance on the north side of the accessory building. So this is the property, the little yellow box that you see is where it is proposed to install the wood burning appliance. So, a few, a bit of a discussion, so the frontage is 101 meter on County Road 45, the existing area of the property is 1.97 acres, so smaller than the required three acres usually to have these appliances, so the property cannot adhere to those two requirements, so lot area and the minimum required setback to the property line. So there, usually when someone wants to install that, we require more than three acres, and when the property is more than three acres, usually the 46 meter will comply, so it's normal that these two don't naturally kind of go together. So the owner was wanting to install it there, basically to comply with specifications of installation, and to come, to try to comply, I guess, most with the neighbors residential, there's two residential houses across County Road 45 that are technically, that's why the 45 meter is a little bit too, can't be accommodated via the property line. So the other dwellings, there's one on the south, which is at 60 meter, and one on the east at about 100 meter, but this is from the appliance to the dwelling. So when we passed that, when we passed that bylaw, it was really to try to avoid nuisance to neighboring property, so with the 46 meter, when the 46 meter can be accommodated on the neighboring property, if it's a three-acre lot, usually, the neighboring property also have setback that it respects, so it ends up being even more than 46 meter. So this is really to the dwelling, so this is not at all to justify the reduced setback, it's just really to explain what's going on, the setback is really to the property line and not to the dwelling. It's not like the nutrient management, where you actually go from the building for odor nuisance, this one here, smoke nuisance, it was really specified that it's to the property line and not to the dwelling. So as I mentioned, it cannot be reviewed under the scope of the Planning Act, but it's still a bylaw that has been passed, so it still needs to be complied with. It is a land use bylaw, so that's why we still usually apply the four tests of a minor variance to such bylaw. So, just a little bit of a background on the bylaw... So just a little bit of a background on the bylaw. So when, when it was passed, it was passed under the municipal act, and it was mostly for nuisance. So we had a couple that were installed prior to 2010 that were creating nuisance, so that's why the bylaw was created. So as you can see, those two facts that are stated, it's really just for, for odor nuisance, so for odor, in this case for smoke nuisance. So that's why the bylaw was created. We did, we did pass a reduced setback in the past, but the two, the two neighboring properties could not have a dwelling on them. So it was a bit different in that sense, and it was only for setback and not for lot area. So in this case, I'll switch to this one here. So the, there's no actual recommendation as per planning act, so I know my resolution says to approve minor variance. I just want to note that this was before a neighboring owner came forward with a concern to me, that he objects to the minor variance. So that, I'll, with the four tests, I think I have them here, so anyway, one says that, oh, I have it written there and there. So is it deemed suitable and desirable for the surrounding area? So if none of the neighbors object, if all the neighbors agree, that's why there's a notification 60 meter buffer all around the property, you can consider it deemed suitable and desirable for the surrounding area. When a neighbor objects to the minor variance, the, one of these tests that says is it deemed desirable for the surrounding area, that's what the committee, I guess, has to evaluate. So these are just facts that I wrote there. So the nearest neighbor location is more than the 46 meter, but as I explained, it's to the property line. The chosen location is tree to the north and the east. There's a building that protects the smoke, some of the smoking is going smoke, going south, smoke may go south anyway. Other requirements of the bylaw, aside from the setback and the lot area, could be complied with, but as I mentioned, there's one important fact with the four tests that I cannot be quite, be deemed appropriate for neighboring. So that's the property itself, that's the garage that would protect the wood burning appliance. So the neighbors would not actually see the appliance, it's hidden behind that garage there. That's the view looking west, and that's the view looking east. So the neighbor that actually objects with this minor variance just lived past that tree line there on the right side. So they are within that, that wind corridor, and they are within the buffer of the 46 meter still, so. And this is where the wood burning appliance would be installed. So this is the four tests that we would, I wrote here, planning act. These four tests come from the planning act, they have to be applied to all land use planning, minor variance application. So does it confirm with the official plan? Yes. Does it comply with the zoning bylaw? Yes, because these accessory units are permitted. Number three, deemed suitable, as I explained. And is it minor in nature? Well, this is, I guess, up to the committee to decide. Is it deemed minor in nature? It's a reduced setback and a reduced lot area. So those are two important factor, I guess, to consider. And recommendations, so as I mentioned, is this not a planning act? There's no formal recommendation for this decision. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? Go ahead, Councilor Madden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Personally, I'm going to recommend a deferral, and we ask for something related to wind direction and prevalence, so that it can actually show us, we can get some mapping that'll show us exactly what's going to happen to that neighboring property, so that everybody's concerns should be addressed. And it would, it would give us more information to make the decision, so that we're not, we're not even pinching on somebody's enjoyment of their property.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Kedel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, you know, you're going to think I'm in a bad mood or something, but to reduce it from 46 meters to 20, less than half, you know, that's, I could see that as being-
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Gary.
Yeah, I think these outdoor burning things, it kind of opens up, if somebody wants to decide to throw in something other than clean wood or whatever, it's, it's a major interference on the enjoyment of property and whatnot, so.
So that's the issue we had north of town, and the reason the bylaw was put in was specifically for that reason.
Just a temptation there, if somebody throw a pressure treated or painted wood or something, then it's-
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just drove past that property, and, and they're very, they're very close. They're not, they're not just right across the street from each other, but literally where the furnace would be, the house is, is right there. And so if there was a southeasterly wind, they'd, they'd get it. So I, I think it, I'm certainly not prepared to vote in favor of it tonight. I'd either vote in deferral or, or against it.
Okay, the last, go ahead.
Just, I know the place well, and I know the owner well too, so, but just, just for everybody context, he's already burning with a large stove inside the garage, which is creating smoke. So it's not, not that I want to approve it or nothing, it's just that, I'm saying that a lot of people are having wood stoves, and he's already burning stuff there, and he just basically would put it at the back where it's farther away from everybody. But just like any wood stove in Canada, when you burn wood, it will smoke your neighbors somehow, but just for everybody to know.
Okay.
Does anyone wish to speak in favor or against the application this evening? Please come to the microphone and state your name.
Sure thing. I'm Scott McCormick. Good evening, everyone. I'm here representing the, the neighbor to the east, which is my mom, Mary McCormick, and a lot of the issues have already been brought up that I, that I mentioned, that was mentioned here. But one was from the, from what's it called, the report that you had, the staff report. For, for number two on the list, the second point that you have to cross is comply with the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw. The purpose of the zoning bylaw was to protect neighbors from pollution, and to protect the forest, which is, my mom's forest is going to be within that 20 meters, to protect the forest from sparks and forest fire, to, the bylaw's purpose was to prevent that. I really think everybody could agree on that. So I do not think that, as for number two on the list of the reasons why it should be granted, I don't think it should be granted on that. I may be mistaken, but I really think the purpose of the bylaw was to protect neighbors from pollution. Now, the next issue is also, well, pollution and safety with regards to the fire and the nuisance. I don't know what's going to happen over there, but if it's going to be monitored, if, or anything like that, I, we don't know. Another issue I had was, I only received a letter about this meeting last Monday, last Sunday. And I tried to prepare as well as I could, but I couldn't find, I didn't do as much as maybe as I should. But with regards to the report, in the report, it said that the neighbors were asked whether this was good. Now, I don't know if you used the same report that I was given, but in number four, where it says, this is number four of the list of what you have to check off before a bylaw is passed, under number four, it had here an explanation that the, this was what was written. "The proposed relief from zoning bylaw requirements will generate minimal impact on the adjacent lands and property owners despite the reduction in setback a lot of area." I disagree with that. The owner, that would be Marcel, the owner has discussed the matter with all adjacent neighbors, and that wasn't done. So those are the two major things that I would like you to consider before, and I would really like it just voted against, but the deferral is second best for me.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'll ask you a second time, does anyone wish to speak in favor or against the application this evening? And a third and final time?
Okay, thank you. Are there any further questions from members of council? We have a, I will call a vote on to be carried or defeated at this point, unless there is a significant amount of people that want to defer. Are we ready to vote on this? We are ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed to the motion? Motion is defeated. Okay, thank you. And moving on to MV-03 2025, Tyler Ray.
Yeah, so MV, the owner for this file, Mr. Mike Ray, so I would ask, Mr. Mayor, staff is requesting that the committee of adjustment defer the minor variance application to a subsequent meeting. It was a miscommunication, I guess, with the county's, the owner and the township, so we will defer until we have all required approvals before we move forward with this application. Thank you.
Okay. Vote on deferral? Does it need to be voted on? Okay. Thank you, Jacob. Motion to adjourn, Councilor Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Deputy Mayor Williams. That being, there being no further business to discuss, the committee of adjustment hearing was adjourned at 6:09 PM.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor? Motion is carried, none opposed. Okay, second meeting of the evening. We'll move to the public meeting of planning. Are there any disclosure of conflict of interest? Seeing none, motion to accept the agenda, Deputy Mayor Williams.
Public meeting?
Yep, public meeting, planning.
I was looking to be at the wrong one. Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Massey, that the council of the township in North Glengarry accepts the public meeting of planning agenda on Monday, May the 26, 2025.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on the agenda? All those in favor? Motion is carried, there are none opposed. Ratify the minutes, the public meeting of planning minutes, May 12, 2025. Councilor Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Kedel, that the council of the township, of North Glengarry accepts the minute of the public meeting of planning Monday, of Monday, May 12, 2025.
Okay, thank you. And-
Protection, protection please. There is, we're speaking here about the public meeting from last time regarding May 12th, is that correct?
We are. And the, and the, if you're going to bring up something that was in the minutes, the, something was in the minutes that was improperly put in there by the clerk. We found that today, and the minutes were subsequently corrected.
Okay, can we see that? We have, we need to have official proof that this has been corrected?
Do you have the minutes back there?
Yeah.
Okay, you can do that while we continue on the zoning bylaw.
They're on the website after we all-
We won't see that right now.
They're on the website. I reloaded them, they were corrected on website, on our township website.
What time, today?
Uh, this morning, before noon.
Okay, there's, there's, you can't, you can't go against it, but it has been, it has been corrected, 100%. Zoning bylaw amendment BP 2025 13, bylaw stop up, close, and sell road allowance, Bordon. Welcome, Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is a file really looking for direction from council in the matter of stop up, close, and sell a portion of a road allowance between Canyon Concession 14 IL and 15 IL, lying east of 14 R 300 in North Glengarry. It's to be merged with an adjacent parcel of lands known as 18 408 Canyon Concession Road 15 IL owned by Bordon and Valence Ag Inc. So as you can see here, very quickly, Maxville and then Dominionville, and you see that little red line there, that's the road allowance that's being discussed here, so it's not near any urban or rural sediment area. So that's the property, that, the, I guess, the white rectangles that you see there are poultry barns, and the red rectangle that you have there is a, an existing road allowance. So the current driveway goes through the road allowance, and then the farm is there. So I'll explain just a little bit later, we have some, I have some close-ups here. So basically, the owner, Bordon and Valence Ag Inc., that own both the north and the south portion of the road allowance, they're looking into inquiring that road allowance. So it was never really an issue, as, as you can see right there, all the buildings were constructed south of the road allowance. But now, the owners want to construct a machine shop, storage building, right where the road allowance would be. So technically, this is not permitted. So what, what the purpose here is, is that they want to acquire the section that's lot two, three, and four, between concession 14 and 15, and it would be merged with the property on the north side. So basically, no new lots would be created, and it would basically just make that road allowance part of the property on the north side. So as you can see there, heading east, there's another road allowance that used to exist there where the yellow line is, that was given to Bordon Farm previously. Now, this farm that owns north and south of this road allowance are inquiring to see if they can acquire that one. So if you head more west, it also abuts on, on another owner, but still the same farm. So it's all Bordon Farms, I guess. There was previous agreements made, so especially when, so this is an airplane runway right there that you see. So when they were given the okay to have the runway there, all the buildings there, the driveway goes through, they were previously given permission to cross the road allowance, because the township had no intent of developing it into a road, obviously, and also because of the fact that you cannot even access Valence Road on the east. So that's why the, now the owners are inquiring to see if they can get that road allowance merged with their property to be able to build this new building. So that's if you go more west, so as you can see, it stops there at that property. The, the owner, they change ownership for the next lot, and then it completely, it's no longer the farm, like where it's heavily wooded there, it's not the farm. So they're only looking for that portion of the road. So the exact location has not been determined, but it's, it will be within the road allowance. So from a planning standpoint, I mean, there's no intent of developing that road anytime soon, geological, environmental nuisance standpoint, there's no issues. So just to show two pictures here, especially the one on the bottom, I guess shows it more. So the road allowance actually goes right through their property between the, the farm office and the dwelling. So I'm actually standing within the road allowance. Picture on the top is if I look east, picture on the bottom if I, is, if I look west. So this is the road allowance that we're discussing here, only right up to the next lot, which there is no road allowance. So basically, the planning act gives council permission to give or sell any property that they own, that the township would consider to stop up, close, and sell a road allowance, provided it's, it's not required for any future municipal land use, all costs are to be borne by the applicant. The township would, should not create any landlocked properties, so in this case, it's a little bit strange, because the road allowance kind of creates a landlocked property on the south side, so that's why it would be good to, to give it to the owner on, on the north, which is the same as on the south, so it's all one property. Generally speaking, the township would only consider applications for abutting landowners, so this is the case here, and it's actually same landowner on the north and the south. Municipality considered necessary and desirable for the public, so in this case, it's definitely desirable for the farmer, case-by-case basis, of course. So this is what we normally, the regular process. So we're, right now, I guess, at number two, I'm just looking to see if, instruction from council, see if I should proceed with circulation to adjacent neighbors, which in this case is all the same person, so it should be pretty straightforward. Notification to public newspaper post assigned there, just to make sure, like, for example, if there's like a snowmobile trail or something like that, we still advertise to everybody. In this case, there's none, we checked already, plus I don't think the owners would be glad to see snowmobiles going right through their property all winter long. Road allowance appraisal if needed, reference plan if needed as well, and then we will actually pass closing sale and stop up of the municipal road allowance, should council decide that it's desirable. property all winter long. Road allowance appraisal if needed, reference plan if needed as well, and then we will actually pass closing sale and stop-up of the municipal road allowance, should council decide that it's desirable. So this is basically the two options. Just looking to see if we proceed with this or if, if we don't. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? Go ahead, councillor Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Jacob, how wide and long is this parcel?
Wide, it's 40 feet wide.
Okay.
And long, I'm, I'm sorry councillor Massey, I think it's about 300 meters, but I could check.
1,200 feet or something?
Approximately.
Okay, so with, with, asking that so we could base the price on an acre of land there?
The technique, the, the land is useless forever. You could never develop that into anything else because it's so narrow, you can't do anything.
No, I know, I know. I mean, but to the owner, the landowner, that's what's...
Okay, yes, yeah.
And secondly, being on Indian lands, do they have any, do we need to consult, consult them, consult with them also?
We will do the, it will be in my next steps, yes. We will do the consultation.
So you're just basically asking if council wishes to...
To proceed, yeah, yeah.
Okay, any further questions or comments?
Does anyone wish to speak in favor or against the conversation this evening regarding the road allowance? A second time, and a third time.
Okay, thank you. So no, no new business, adjournment. Councillor Kaddell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There being no further business to discuss, the public meeting of planning was adjourned at 6:20 PM.
All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Okay, sure. Go ahead, yep, take two minutes. Hines, I sent you the minutes to your email.
Thank you.
Minute, go ahead, quick. Okay, we're ready to go. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our meeting of Monday, May 26th, 2025. I'd ask everyone to please stand for the national. So before we get the meeting started, just have a quick presentation. So we'd like to recognize the, our workers who continue in education or do spectacular things, and this guy has done, done them both, so. So this certificate of recognition is presented to Josh DeCass in recognition of achieving the Associate Road Supervisor Certificate from the Association of Ontario Road Supervisors. Congratulations, Josh. Okay, we will call the meeting to order. Are there any declaration of pecuniary interest on the general nature thereof? Seeing none, motion to accept the agenda, councillor Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Madden. Council of the township of North Glengarry accepts the agenda of the regular meeting of council on Monday, May 26th, 2025.
Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Adoption of the previous minutes, councillor Madden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Martin, that the minutes of the following meetings be adopted as circulated regular meeting of council minutes, Monday, May 12th, 2025.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on the minutes? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Moving on to delegations, the Hopital Glengarry Memorial Hospital update. I'd like to welcome Rob Aldridge Hughes. Yep, please.
Do I need to note, we're good, we're on. Oh, and I can advance my slides myself. Excellent. Good evening, everybody. For those in the room that don't know me, I'm Rob Aldridge Hughes. I'm the president and CEO of Hopital Glengarry Memorial Hospital. Before I jump into the slide deck, I just want to, to say that this week represents Rural Medical Week, in which we've welcomed two physicians from the University of, sorry, medical students from the University of Ottawa, who are spending the week here with us. And next week, we'll be having two more physicians come and spend the week with us at the hospital. They're, oftentimes, their first opportunity to learn about medicine and practicing in a clinical environment and seeing some hands-on work. So I do want to say a significant thank you to the team at, at North Glengarry, particularly Ainsley Hunt for working with us very closely in planning some events about what it's like to live in a rural Ontario setting, as well as practice in Ontario, rural Ontario setting as well. So thank you very much. So my purpose here tonight is to talk to you about the very early stages of our pre-capital work for our hospital. We all know that our hospital was built for a different time and a different day. We've just recently celebrated 60 years of service and care at, at HGMH. But we know that we didn't have computers back then, we didn't have half the equipment we have back then, and anybody that's been in our hospital rooms know that the size of those rooms are far too small for the services that we provide today, often causing issues from a safety perspective, as well as accessibility perspectives. We've seen those washrooms and getting mobility devices in there can certainly be a challenge, just to name a few. So the purpose of me today and having this slide deck is really to keep me on track because anybody that knows me knows I can continue to talk, so I'm gonna try and keep this, keep this aligned with the, the deck in front of you. So the presentation here, really looking at the evolving community needs of, of our service area, creating a rural health hub model and building capacity for our future. So some of the, the reasons why, that I've already mentioned, but the aging infrastructure does limit quality care. There's a misalignment with current and future clinical needs. As we look to the, the equipment and the different processes that we need to put into place to manage the care of our patients, there is often a misalignment of the space that we have, a lack of an integrated service delivery, often leaving to fragmented care for patients, and a growing demand in a changing rural population. There's a system dependence on urban transfers, meaning we're sending a lot of patients out, but then when the patients are, are ready and able to come home, they may not be able to get back to our hospital as quickly as we'd like them to. So I'll talk a little bit about the ideas and, for change around that. There's a strategic opportunity for us here to really lead rural healthcare leadership and system transformation for healthcare. I think what we've developed as our pre-capital submission is in alignment with the ministry and Ontario Health priorities and services to meet the current and future needs of our Francophone populations in rural and eastern Ontario. So what is our vision? Our vision is to create a campus of care. What does that mean? We have acute care services. Those are the services that you know today. When we over, when we look at the, the future projection of population growth, but as well as the demographics of the population, we know that we are living in an area where we have, care for seniors is our, is a main priority for us. And so the expanded capacity really isn't around the number of acute medicine beds. We'll see some growth there, but it's not, it's not significant. The new and the innovative idea that we have is creating a restorative and transitional care unit. And there, we would see an additional 10 beds of growth in our hospital. These are patients that no longer need an acute care bed. Often, those beds are the highest funded beds to, to care for those patients, but these are patients that may not be ready to go home just yet. So we're going, the plan would be that we could move those patients into a restorative and transitional care unit, or welcome patients back that have gone out to a more tertiary center into a restorative and transitional care unit to increase their level of functionality. So prior to going to either long-term care, or home with support, or another supportive housing area, that we could perhaps even divert and increase the, the level of mobility of these patients and the functionality of their, those patients. We're going to create ambulatory and procedural services and really focus on virtual care. If you've been paying attention to some of the announcements that we've made, we're making a significant investment in the way we provide our electronic medical record at the hospital, and we're moving to the, the epic environment. So we will be connected with 16 other hospitals on one instance of our electronic medical record. And so this will be in connection with many of the hospital, all of the hospitals in, in Ottawa, and the Ottawa Hospital being the, the owner of the, the instance. And so from there, the virtual care that these rooms and, that would have the functionality to come and see your specialist after perhaps you've had a surgical procedure, rather than driving to downtown Ottawa, you'd be able to come and see on a follow-up care that, that 10-minute visit instead of driving to the city, you'd be able to see your physician or your specialist quite quickly here, close to home. As well, when we look at the services that we provide, we do see a lot of services within our emergency department that may necess, may not necessarily need to be done there, but done in a different environment. So creating a medical day program. So things like infusions can be done here, social support services and, and things of that nature. And then we plan to create a primary and community care hub. Here, we plan to house supports for primary care, the physicians coming to the area, and we've had a number of discussions of partners that I'll talk to you in a little bit, that may be interested in partnering with us with co-location on the hospital grounds in this community health hub, because they think what we see is significant synergies for patients and providers when the services that you're referring them to is right down the hall. So I'll talk about some of the providers that we've been chatting with that are interested in continuing the dialogue as we, as we move ahead in this planning. Mental health and addiction services would also be in the, the health hub, seniors' wellness and support, and diagnostic therapeutic services that we're offering today, and CT into the future, and then creating navigation and support services with our partners at Ontario Health at Home. So that's the holistic view that we plan to take in our pre-capital submission, so very early, early days, but we're, we're tying up some of those loose ends and plan to submit to the ministry and Ontario Health in the coming weeks. So just to give you a little bit of an idea, right now, we're operating in 51,000 square feet. And if we were to be doing the services that we do today, we would need to double what our size, just to keep doing what we're doing right now. As we look ahead to the, the future, that 10, 20, 30-year horizon, we'll need to grow to 136,000 square feet, as, and that includes the community health hub planning as we, as we look ahead as well. So the strategic partnerships that we've been chatting with have been the Alexandria FO for primary care, CMHA at Cornwall and SNG, so the Canadian Mental Health Association, those darn healthcare acronyms, the Centre de Santé Communitaire de l'Estrie, Care4, the Ottawa Hospital, Cornwall Community Hospital, the University Heart Institute, and Ontario Health at Home. So these are the partners that are interested in continuing the dialogue, talking about putting services and co-location on our, on our hospital property in, in the future. So this has a significant alignment with ministry and capital policy. It's evidence-based. We've been looking at the, the future projections of the community. When we look at the age demographic of the 80-plus group, in the next 20 years, it's, it's thought that that will grow greater than 154% than what it is today. So that's why we're looking at services that really support seniors in, in North Glengarry, particularly with that transitional care model and restorative care model, and the, the, the primary care support services that, that go along with that. So addressing our high priority populations, supporting an aging infrastructure renewal, which I've talked about, and the opportunity for a phased implementation as we, as we grow out, and also the reuse of our, our current site. So we would be looking at a renovation expansion of our current and existing site on the, on the hospital property. So those are some of the things that do look, the ministry looks favorable on when you're looking at opportunities for growth and expansion. So our ask is going to be, when we, when we submit, is that the, our planning is endorsed to move to the, the first step of the, the capital process. So we're currently at stage zero, so we're at baby stage. So we'd like to enter into stage one, but we need approval to do that from, from the ministry and support a planning grant that will allow us to do our more detailed master programming and master plan to develop a study around these ideas and these concepts. And I think that what we've put forward is a recognition of our rural healthcare challenges, but this will, is a, is a system that can support those challenges into the future, and supporting equitable access to care for all and close to home. So we think it's a clear case, we think it's a strong case, and it's been a lot of, a lot of fun digging into the data and, and looking at options and, and working with our partners to develop a plan for, for our future. So I told you that would keep me on track.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Have you, have you had conversations yet with the ministry, and how were you received?
So the, the initial stages we've had with the capital branch, everything seems good. We'll be meeting with Catherine Wang, who's the deputy minister, in a, in a couple of weeks, but it was meeting with, with her staff, just to get a sense, to sort of float it by, and that's been received positively, and also with Ontario Health, who also needs to endorse our plan as well, in terms of the, the focus. Clearly, the one challenge is the number of hospitals that were built at a time long, long ago, that are also needing service and infrastructure changes in, in growing in demographic populations. So will I say this is going to be a quick yes? I don't believe I can say that, but I think that our, our case makes sense, and I think that it makes sense for the, the people of North Glengarry and surrounding areas.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Manley, then Deputy Mayor Williams.
Thank you for your presentation, Rob.
You're welcome.
That's exciting news. I'm hoping maybe the council can somehow maybe get into some sort of delegations too with, with the, with the province or whatever, and help, help with that or whatever.
And I'm happy to attend.
Perfect. And just one more comment. I'd like to thank you personally on, for all your support and working with the township of North Glengarry for the pool. It has been It has been a, a big success for, for us or whatever, and I think the fact that, you know, we've got, we've got a swimming pool available to our residents, I think is, is very, very important. So thank, thank you for that.
My pleasure.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Williams.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Well done on, on the, the planning out of this. You know, you've covered off really on all of the important aspects, and I don't know, but if I, if I worked at the ministry, I'd say yes right away.
Okay, we'll get you a new job.
But, but no, it looks like an excellent plan that'll bring the hospital, you know, not only to, up to today, but into the future, which is, which is what we, we need in this community, because we need this hospital. Now, I'm just wondering about the Eastern Ontario Health Unit that owns, that owns a building up here on Anick Street?
Yes.
And there's been some discussions about the use of that space. And are they one of, well, Dr. Paul sort of alluded to, to some, some partnership there. Are you going to?
Yes, so I can, I can respond to that. So we've had preliminary, preliminary discussions about things that we could do sooner for a health hub model, for allied health services to support primary care utilizing that space. And I think that that's still on the table to look as an, at an opportunity, so that we can demonstrate sort of a, a concept to the ministry and where that could go and grow from. So as, as, two days ago, I was speaking with, with Dr. Paul, and it was brought up, and we're going to continue those, those dialogues. This model will be a, a little bit different, because it will be more all-encompassing of additional services. The square footage that is currently available in the EUHU, I believe is, don't quote me, but I think 3,000 square feet, so not a significant amount of space, but enough, I think, that, that primary care could use and utilize that space to, to develop allied health services. If we continue to look forward and, and join and working with the, the family health organization and the development of a family health team, to have those wraparound services available for, for those patients. So, so the answer, the, the short answer is yes, those dialogues continue, and then this is the longer version of that, that would be quite more significant than, than that original planning.
Well, that would be excellent, because if we could get a head start on that and get some of those services offered in this community quickly, then the plan can then take its time to roll out.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, councillor Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Rob. Always appreciate the update. Just hopeful timeline on ministry endorsement. What would be, I guess, what would be ideal and what would be realistic?
So I would say likely the soonest we would ever see a shovel in the ground would be that nine-to-10-year horizon, because this planning process is long and significant, and each stage of the planning process requires an approval. And as I said, many other hospitals in different states than ourselves, where may have certain investments made into those before, before we would. So we can't really say, but I would say that advocacy will be fundamentally important as we, as we move ahead in this, this planning. So I would love to say nine to 10 years, but I've seen it go much, much longer.
Okay, good. Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you, Rob.
Okay, thank you.
Much appreciate it. Thanks for showing.
Have a great evening, everyone.
Moving on to staff reports, administrative department, AD 2025-03, confirmation of the member for the SDG Accessibility Committee, Deputy Mayor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Massey, that the council of the township of North Glengarry receives staff report number AD 2025-03, confirmation of North Glengarry representatives to serve on the SDG Accessibility Advisory Committee, and that the council of the township of North Glengarry authorizes staff to advise the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry that Mrs. Brenda Palmer from Alexandria will serve as the township of North Glengarry's primary representative on the SDG Accessibility Committee, replacing Mrs. Melissa Dubois, and that Robert Barrigan from Alexandria will serve as alternate placing, replacing Mrs. Brenda Palmer.
Okay, thank you. Jenna?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was a bit of a tongue twister. Thank you. So this report to council addresses the change in North Glengarry representatives on the SDG Accessibility Advisory Committee. The Ontarians with Disability Act requires municipalities to prepare an accessibility plan. This plan updates, outlines initiatives to identify, remove, and prevent barriers. Furthermore, the act mandates municipalities with a population of 10,000 or more to have an accessibility advisory committee. Currently, our committee consists of representatives from each lower tier within STNG, with the majority of the committee members experiencing from some disability themselves or are immediate caregivers with someone with a disability. Normally, this renewal of the committee member would occur when the elections, like municipal elections happen. However, since there's been staffing change, we do need to fill in the vacancy. So Brenda Palmer is a, a good candidate, as her son does have autism, as well as her alternate is visually impaired, Mr. Barrigan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Okay. Thank you, Jenna. Moving on to Community Services Department, CS 2025-10 ICE allocation policy, councillor Cadell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Martin, that the council of the township of North Glengarry receives staff report number CS 2025-10 ICE allocation policy, and that bylaw 162025, read, he read, first, second, and third time, and enacted in open council this 26th day of May 2025.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, Stephanie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So each year, the Community Services Department works very closely with our various user groups who come forward to look to request ice rentals over the, the hockey or the seasonal ice season. So what we've done, staff have put together a new policy for the township to help us identify what our priorities are in terms of ice allocation yearly, and also ensuring that we're doing it in a way that's fair and equitable to all of our users. Obviously, we want to make sure that adequate ice time is made available for public programming, to our hockey associations, to youth programs. And so by developing this policy, we hope to provide a bit more of, of clarity and transparency for all of our ice users in terms of our expectations of use of our arenas and facilities, and just a bit of transparency when it comes to what our process is for identifying what the priorities are for ice usage within the township of North Glengarry. So by implementing this policy, there really is no change in terms of what our procedure is, but essentially it just allows us something in writing to support our decision-making and outlines what our process is for determining those priorities. Subject to any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? Go ahead, councillor Manley.
Just one comment. Looks really good, policy-wise. I like the actual percentage of residents for team, which I think gives a good, clear priority. And from what I saw in terms of the organization of priorities for who gets first dibs, I think it makes sense, I think it's fair, and I think it's a good way for, to make sure that our residents are, are getting the access they want and need. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just about to ask you, what, what has changed in this policy compared to the last? But you're saying this is, the first time this, this policy's actually been put on paper.
Yes, so through you, Mr. Mayor. Like I mentioned, there's no change in our process. I think there's a lot of procedures that have been done year over year, and are, you know, we're fortunate to have ice users who are very familiar with what our processes are. But myself being new coming into the township, as well as some new changes in our Community Services Department, we wanted to make sure that we're following a consistent process. So by creating a policy where we're actually defining, to your point, you know, what, what in fact constitutes a minor sports association, what do we recognize as being local or local township sports, what do we identify as being the timeframe for primetime ice usage? So by putting these things or assigning a definition to it, there, it just creates greater clarity within the department and for the users as well.
Yeah, I think it's excellent. Well done.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or comments? Yeah, go ahead.
Just take a look at, sorry, I had it highlighted and I was looking for it, on section 6.2 IID, it just mentions field in there as well. Okay.
Thank you for making that correction.
You got an A. Good job. Okay, all, no further questions? All those in favor of the motion? The motion is carried, none opposed. Okay, moving on to CS 2025-11, Community Donations, councillor Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Manley, that the council of the township of North Glengarry receives staff report CS 2025-11, Community Donations, for information purposes only.
Okay, thank you. Stephanie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this report is to provide council with an update on two very generous donations that we've recently received, or requests for donations that we've received from local organizations. The first one being a request that was received in partnership from the Maxwellon District Chamber of Commerce, as well as the Maxwellon District Lions Club, who have requested to plant a tree, along with a plaque in King George Park in honor of Amanda Maloney from Swiss Farm Bakery, who tragically passed away suddenly on Saturday, March 29. As many of us will recall, she was very active in the community as both a friend, a colleague, and a supporter to many individuals and businesses within this area. And so both of these organizations are looking to generously donate a tree to the park in order to help commemorate her within the community. The second request we received was from Alexandria Molding, who have requested to plant a large maple tree in Island Park. Alexandria Molding annually takes place in the Canada Day celebrations and has usually handed out either pine or spruce saplings to attendees. So this year Alexandria Molding would like to do something a bit different by donating an actual tree within Island Park, as they recognize this as being an area where a lot of families and members of the community come and enjoy the, the public park space. So they feel this would be a way to contribute to the community as well. So as such, the Community Services Department is happy to work with both of these organizations to plant and, and go over any logistics of installing trees within these two township island parklands. Subject to, again, to any questions.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? I will just say that's really nice of them to come forward with that, and it's great that we, that we can work with them and see, see these projects come to fruition, so thank you for bringing that.
Thank you.
Okay, call the question. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Thank you, Stephanie. Moving on to the Treasury Department, TR 2025-10 HWSF-2 Transfer Payment Agreement. Councillor Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Manley, that the council of the township of North Glengarry receives staff report TR 2025-10 HWSF-2 Transfer Payment Agreement, and that council approve and authorize the transfer payment agreement between His Majesty the King in the Province of Ontario, represented by the Minister of Solicitor General for the Province of Ontario, the ministry, and the township of North Glengarry, the municipality, related to funding provided under the HWSF-2 Transfer Payment Agreement.
Okay, thank you. Zoe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff receive the transfer payment agreement for the funding provided under the Housing Enabling Water Systems Fund. This agreement is necessary to accept the funding for the Alexandria Lagoon program.
Okay. Okay, any questions or comments? Yeah, exactly. Okay, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Thank you, Zoe. Moving on to Building, Planning and Bylaw Department, BP 2025-14, zoning bylaw amendment Z032025, Carol Joannette, councillor Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Martin, that the council of the township of North Glengarry adopts zoning bylaw number Z032025, and that bylaw number Z0, Z032025 be read a first, second, and third time, and enacted in open council this 26th day of May 2025.
Okay, thank you. Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So yeah, the applicant for this file was Madame Carol Joannette, 3805, Kenrod 45. So as you can see on the map, it's just southwest of Alexandria. The zoning bylaw amendment was to rezone the rural portion of the property to Rural Special Exception RU24, to permit a secondary dwelling by way of semi-detached on the subject lands. So the application was circulated, and we have not received any additional comments from any agencies or members of the public. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. And then items under the consent agenda, councillor Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by deputy mayor Williams, that the council of the township of North Glengarry receives the items from the consent agenda for information purposes only.
Any questions on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Under 10, notice of motion, deputy mayor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a motion here. Moved by myself and seconded by councillor Manley, that the council of the township of North Glengarry request that staff prepare a report providing options to consider that would enhance the public notification process on projects that are deemed sensitive in nature. If I may, Mr. Mayor, I'll take just a very quick minute just to explain the idea behind this motion. You know, when it comes to sensitive issues on, that, that, where the government, the Planning Act governs, how public notification is to be handled, there are occasions, I'm, one recently, where public notification probably needed to be more extensive. And so what, what I'm proposing is that we look at this very specifically in terms of what a sensitive issue is. We would have to define it, of course, because there are many sensitive issues that come in front of council, but would have to be limited to, to, to very specifics. And then, and then that would be flagged, and if a sensitive issue came up where what was required under the Planning Act in terms of notification was maybe not as robust as it, as it needs to be, then we would have a, a procedure that would then kick into place, that would then involve additional notifications. So that is a, a motion I'm putting in front of council for today for consideration, and then if it is voted in favor, then staff will come back with a report to council. Thank you.
Okay, so the motion is to ask staff to come back, yeah, oh, just, is to ask staff to come back for a report? Go ahead. Yeah, just ask for staff to come back with a report.
Yeah, I'm completely, fully behind your motion, deputy mayor. It's just that, I don't know, by the Ontario laws, if township or, or township or council can amend those regulations or extend them. I'm just asking.
We can just, well, we'll have, when staff can come back with a report outlining what we're allowed to do and not allowed to do, so I think that, any further questions? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Thank you, deputy mayor. Notice of motion, next regular meeting of council is Monday, June 9, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. here. Question period. I'm going to ask, after last week's fiasco, that anybody coming up to ask a question will ask a succinct question. There are no questions on the, on the Bess battery plant, as those, that is no longer an issue in front of council, as the building permit has already been issued. And so you have, anybody have a question, and it has to be directly relatable to what's on the agenda. If there are any members of the public that wish to... Okay, thank you. There, there'll be no closed session this evening, and confirmation bylaw, councillor Manley.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Manley, that the council of the township of North Glengarry adopts bylaw- of North Glengarry adopts bylaw 172025, being a bylaw to adopt, confirm and ratify matters dealt with by resolution, and that bylaw 172025 be read a first, second, third time and enacted in open council this 26th day of May 2025.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, or none opposed. And adjournment, councillor Massey.
I do have a motion here for the adoption of those systems.
Yeah, we're not going to go into the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Madden, there'll be no further business to discuss. The meeting was adjourned at 6:58 PM.
All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you, everyone, for joining us for our meeting. Again, our next meeting is Monday, June 9th, 2025 at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. Have a good night.